So we're gonna wait one more minute because we're missing a board member, so we're gonna wait just a minute and we'll get started. Thank you. And good afternoon. Silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Christie.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Face the flag, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few announcements. You may recall my announcement at our July 8th work session that the Joint Education Committee would meet on July 22nd. Shortly after that announcement, the meeting was rescheduled to Thursday, August 13th at 4:00 PM in the Andrew Johnson Board Room. The meeting agenda has been published on, has been published on the Board of Education page on the KCS website. Board members, you should have received an email reminder along with a link to the meeting agenda. But I wanted to be sure to remind you that the Tennessee School Boards Association Annual District East Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 15th, in Jefferson County at 5:00 PM. Please let Terry know as soon as possible if you plan to attend. And also, the superintendent will be providing an update, a reopening update during his remarks. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and now we'll have the superintendent's report. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. A few updates, a little longer report than normal, but bear with me, we'll get through it. First, I'd like to make sure all our students and families are aware of the first day of school. It's been delayed by another week, and we will now be on Monday, August 24th, and this will be a half a day for students. There are several reasons for this change, but one of the most pressing is the extra work required to manage our scheduling. In addition to creating schedules for in-person, on-campus instruction at nearly 90 schools, this year we're creating class and staffing schedules for more than 18,000 students who enrolled in our virtual learning program. As you can imagine, this is a challenging task, and it's been magnified by the need to hire additional teachers for some of our virtual classes. One of our top priorities is to make sure that we provide as many courses as possible for students. In order for us to honor all the virtual course requests and to meet the requirements for graduation, we will be requesting your consideration and approval of a contract next week with Florida Virtual School to supplement our course offerings. At the present time, Mr. Dupler is reviewing that contract, and I think he's made his review and submitted it back to Florida Virtual, so we're waiting their acceptance, and then as soon as we get that, we will provide it to you for your review and perusal. At this time, the cost is estimated to be approximately 1.5 million per semester to cover about 1,300 student requests. That would be the equivalent of 55 to 65 teachers, so. If, and again, that's an ongoing process, the scheduling is, so we can't pin down the exact amount at this point in time, but as we work on the scheduling, we'll get closer to the amount, so. And again, that's 1.5 per semester, so about $3 million, it would be the estimated cost at this point for the year. We won't know about next semester, obviously, until we get into December to see how many people wish to come back in person and how many people wish to go through the virtual program. And for those of you who are not familiar with it, the Florida Virtual School is a standalone district recognized by the state of Florida. It's been approved by the Tennessee Board of Education, the State Board of Education, and has successfully partnered with many other school districts in Tennessee in recent years, including Williamson County, Metro Nashville, Shelby County, Lenore City. And let me say too, you know, if the teaching positions were available, yes, you know, we would hire teachers, but these are positions that are just, we have no applicants for. So it does become imperative that, we made the promise to folks that we were going to deliver a program, a valid virtual learning program, and this will allow us to do that. The program offers 190 courses, including AP and honors courses, and offers an engaging and interactive curriculum that's available to students 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Courses are taught by certified teacher who can provide one-on-one instruction, and students can reach their teachers directly via phone, text, or email. For our middle and high school students, teachers lead online exams and discussions-based assessments over the phone. Teachers also reach out to students prior to the start of the course to meet them personally, and students have an online orientation prior to the start of the course. Now again, some of our students will be taking virtual courses from our teachers, and those that we can't provide for would be the ones that would be enrolled in the Florida Virtual Program. Students will still remain enrolled at their local school. And as I've said before, this will be a challenging year, and I believe we need to consider all the options available to provide students with the courses they need and expect. Delaying another week will also allow us to provide more time for training on virtual platforms, to deploy Chromebooks under our one-to-one initiative to allow for our case, and to allow for our case managers and special education service providers to make contact with our students and families, and to deploy health equipment, including the assembly of a walkthrough thermometer. Many of you, I'm not sure if you went down to the maintenance building a week or so ago to look at a walkthrough thermometer, but we can actually accommodate 50, 60, 70 students a minute through the walk-throughs. And Mr. Oaks has ordered, I believe, 145 of those. We'll be assembling those and getting them to schools based on enrollment, so that should speed up the process. But, and in addition, of course, the state is supplying personal protective equipment to all teachers, and principals were supposed to submit those orders, I think, by the end of the day today, so that equipment will be arriving as well. Our principals have and will continue to work extremely hard to juggle all the details of planning for our staff and students' safe return during this challenging time of opening schools. I know the delay is not ideal, but my hope is that if we take a little extra time, we can avoid some challenges that might come up down the road. And I do appreciate, very much appreciate, our community's patience and grace with this delay. On a related topic, I wanted to mention that orientation for incoming sixth and ninth grade students will now be held on August 20. More details will be shared by our schools, but please make a note of that calendar change. I'd also like to emphasize again that the district is working closely with the Knox County Health Department to monitor the impact of COVID-19. Dr. Buchanan and her staff are continuing to provide us with detailed data about the spread of the virus, and certainly we're grateful for our partnership with Dr. Buchanan and her staff. I wanted to briefly address a specific concern that our teachers have raised about how virtual learning would work if the district operates in the red model. And again, at this time, KCS is planning, we're planning to open in the yellow model on August 24th, which means that both virtual and in-person teachers will be working from their classrooms. But as I've said before, we should all be prepared for the possibility that the district may have to enter the red model at some point during the semester. If that happens, teachers will be able to work from home unless an extenuating circumstance is identified. As teachers have returned to buildings this week, I've been very encouraged to see them embracing the new procedures that we outlined in our reopening plan. I know that practices like wearing masks, physical distancing, and temperature checks can be uncomfortable, but they're very important. I'm also happy to report that in terms of attendance this week, we've varied between 99% and 98% of staff in attendance for the last three days, so certainly very encouraged by that, and I know our teachers want to get back in front of their students and are anxious to do that, and just appreciate their attendance so far this year. And I'm sure on opening day, I would not expect anything less. And I'm very grateful for the dedication of our principals and teachers and staff and their commitment to protecting the health and well-being of our school communities. I'd like to briefly highlight one of our departments here at the central office. The Department of Student Support, led by Jason Myers. Look up and grant at us, Jason, with your mask on. So, he's worked very hard this summer to ensure that our most vulnerable students have received the services they need through extended school year program. In doing so, they've prepared to support our students with special needs for the coming school year and grateful for their efforts. So Jason, thank you so much for all that you do and your staff does to meet the needs of our students and our families with the students with disabilities, and I'll just appreciate you and all that effort. And during this extra week too, and Jason has said we're going to be in touch, our case managers and special ed, special education teachers be in touch with families and make sure that we get off to a great start, so thank you, Jason. And then finally, another celebrity in the audience pleased to announce it, Keith Wilson. Keith, smile. Our Director of CTE has been named as East Tennessee Supervisor of the Year finalist, so yeah, congratulations, Keith. So Keith will now advance as a candidate for the East Tennessee Grand Division and the Tennessee Supervisor of the Year, which will be announced later this fall. So again, congratulations, Keith. Appreciate you and all your hard work. And of course, you know the rest of our team that's here, and let me just say again how much I appreciate all of our team. They have worked just extremely hard over the last, well, since COVID-19 started, actually. I wanted to say over the last several weeks, but it's been much longer than that. So this is just a great team and care a lot about our students and about our teachers and making sure that everything works like it's supposed to work. And again, there will be challenges, I'll say that upfront, and we'll make some mistakes, but please bear with us because we're going to do the very best we can to provide our students with the best educational opportunity that we can provide, and that's whether they're in person or enrolled in the virtual learning program. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my report, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very concerned that we are talking about outsourcing teaching jobs to Florida, especially when we are concerned with the economy. And this is obviously not something that is helpful to our economy, though it's a boon for Florida. Anytime we're talking about outsourcing, that's something that we should, that should be a big red flag to everyone in this room. And I'm concerned that we have no applicants for these 65 positions. So if we could, if someone could send to the board a list of what those positions are that we have no applicants for, I think that would be helpful to us to see, you know, maybe why we can't fill those positions.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I would do that. And I think as of today, Scott, Scott's here with us. I think 159 vacancies, 78 certified, and 81 classified, and we'll send you a breakdown on those by position and by school. And so we, we're in predicament right now in terms of filling the positions for in-person learning. We have, some of you, maybe all of you are familiar with this. We do, we do allow teachers to teach on time card during their planned period if they so wish. We pay extra for that. And so one way we're trying to absorb and make up for the teachers that we don't have is to, is to have principals to submit that information, talk to their teachers, and anyone willing to teach during their planned period will pay, we'll pay extra. And one school got 10 teachers today, I believe, to agree to that. That's two and a half positions, which allows teachers to make some additional money too, so it's really, truly a good thing. It's not a good thing that we don't have applicants and not have, and don't have teachers. And I want to say this too about the contracting. That is not, that is not my, not what I would like to do either. I mean, I'd rather have our own people, but one thing, keep in mind, this is, this whole thing is new to us too, the virtual learning program. So, you know, if we have, if we have students, you know, 18,000, I don't know how many will want to come back in person in December, but, but for example, if we had a large number of students that wanted to come back in person in December, and we didn't have so many that wanted to go virtual too, this gives us some flexibility as well, you know, in terms of contracting it out, because we can, you know, we can maneuver that so that we don't have, you know, we don't have more teachers, or we're not paying for more teaching positions than we would need. So it does give us a little flexibility in the virtual program, but it is not, it is not the preferred method. And I want to say that too, and I'm glad you brought it up, because that is not, outsourcing is not what I feel like works best at all. But I just feel like we're in a situation right now that this might be the best way to address that problem, and hopefully, yeah, Mr. Dupler too, I think wants to say something.
Chair, thank you. I would add, again, I don't, I don't have all the details. You'd have to, you'd have to talk to our great curriculum and instruction department for that, but I can say from working on the contract draft and trying to get something established with the Florida Virtual School is that we're looking at a year max. I mean, it's not, it's in no way a long-term contract at this point.
Thank you. And along that same vein, I very strongly support the change that allows teachers, if we are on red, to teach from home. And I think that makes a large difference and may have made a large difference to a lot of the staff who has taken leave already. So has anyone reached out to those staff members who are on leave to see if that would make a difference in whether they would stay with us?
Yeah, let me, let me ask Scott, Madam Chair, if I could ask Scott, can you respond for us on that, Scott? The teachers that are, that are on leave, the option of coming back in terms of virtual?
For the, the, could you repeat? I apologize.
I apologize, could you repeat the question, Madam Chair?
Sure. We have all those folks who took leave, a lot of them took leave with the understanding that they would have to be in the classroom even if we were on red. So now that that has changed, has anyone reached out to those folks to see if that would change their decision?
We are in the process of doing that. We recognize that being an issue. I want to, you know, so we are reaching out to those folks that, that requested that administrative leave without pay because of that scenario. So we will be reaching back with them as we produce the guidance and the guidelines that's going to come along with that to make them full aware of that and give them opportunity.
Okay, thank you. A lot of teachers have asked me about the personal protective equipment that will actually be provided to them, since they, they aren't seeing that yet, they have some doubts. Can anyone tell us what they should expect to receive?
Yeah, Russ, if you don't mind approaching the mic. We have provided a hand sanitizer for all the rooms. We're still waiting on some of the brackets to mount. We're in the process of mounting those. I think maybe you said a thousand or so of those were mounted just the other day. So we're expecting those brackets. They do have the hand sanitizer, even if they don't have the bracket.
They're being delivered this week.
Yes, so that, plus disinfectant will be in each classroom, and I think paper towels.
Paper towels, we'll make gloves available. State's also making gloves available. We delivered masks and sufficient quantity for all students and teachers over the summer, so those should be at all the schools. Those are the state-issued masks. We've, we've taken 75,000 of those out to the schools over the last several weeks.
Let me say about thermometers too. We said the walk, the walk-through, but.
We've provided the schools 2,100 handheld touchless thermometers, so the, the walk-through thermometers are due in next week, and we'll get those put together and set up at the schools. But they're not a showstopper for us on being able to take temperature, because we do have 2,100 handhelds that have been issued.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks.
And I, I have seen a lot of those handhelds in use in different schools this week and last week, and they are being very diligent about making sure everybody gets their temperature taken, so that seems to be going very well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have two questions about the, the delayed days. Why are we choosing to use inclement weather days rather than just adopting a new calendar?
Well, my thought process about that was to try to, to have the end date not changed, obviously, the, whatever the date, I'm not, I don't have it in my memory bank in terms of the last day of school, but trying to keep the last day of school as it now is the last day. Also trying to, I know we've heard on the breaks that are pretty important to folks in terms of fall break and, and winter holidays and spring break and, and the days at Thanksgiving. So trying to make sure that we keep all the breaks and in-school, like we said, we would in-school, was reasoning inclement weather. Also the possibility that now that we are one-to-one, it might be that provided that folks have electricity, we could go to actually have a red model on an inclement weather day and still have school, so that would be one option. And I think we've got two, I believe, two in-service days, John, that we could convert to, still we could convert to student days, you know, if we needed to do that. So they, again, not ideal, but just, this year has presented lots of challenges, so that was kind of our thinking.
Okay. I, I think it would really, it would really do us well to consider looking at a revised calendar, because we don't know what the weather will do. We never know what the weather will do. And the assumption that we would be able to go, go ahead with instruction assumes that every child is taking their device home and bringing it back to school every single day. If we look at the times that we've canceled recently, it's been either after school is out, early in the morning, long after a teacher could make the decision to send those devices home. So I think it's, I think it would be quite a difficulty, especially for our youngest students, to be carrying those home and back every single day with the idea that we never know what could happen. So they would either need pretty advanced notice that that would have to happen, or, or they would have to have some weather days built in. And the other concern that I have with using those weather days is that in a normal school year, we have built in that extra time. We've built in that instructional time that teachers are with students so that they have the same number of hours. But what we have done now is we have taken that time and teachers are still working that extra time also with no additional compensation. So we're looking at teachers working about 10 extra days this year uncompensated, and that's quite concerning. So I, I hope we would consider a, a new calendar, because I think that would be much, much easier for our families to plan instead of going week by week and trying to figure out what's happening, so that we could have something really solid.
And let me, let me volunteer, Dr. Rieswick. I guess if you maybe get the calendar committee, if the board, you know, wishes us to take a look at that, get the calendar committee together and meet, talk about this, I guess. If, if that's a pleasure.
If we could have some other board members weigh in, I know, you know, I think that the biggest thing we have to go on is the survey that was done in June, and those, changing those, that calendar was not popular with the public. You know, I think a lot of the public would probably say, you know, teachers have been, been paid since March, you know, March, April, May, and they weren't, you know, they weren't working then for the most part. Some of them were, but, but a lot of them weren't. So that could be an issue, you know, with, with the 10 days. Ms. Hill?
I, I don't, I don't mind to direct a comment toward that in that, well, if we, if we make the change, people are going to be unhappy. If we don't make the change, people are going to be unhappy. I can promise you that if we extended our calendar in our end date, or if we started taking holidays away, that our mailboxes would be as full with us doing that as, as, as anything else we might try to do. I personally have not, at least in the two days the change has been made, had any emails opposing that change. So I think I do support trying to keep the calendar within its initial parameters at this point in time, because odds are, we may not be able to anyway, but, but for right now, I do appreciate the use of that, plus the fact that, that virtual will be an option if, if push came to shove, even with weather days. And again, I, I appreciate what Ms. Owens is saying about a lot of times, I mean, the kids aren't going to carry them back and forth, but hopefully for the biggies, a lot of times we do have notice ahead of time when storms are coming in and that type of thing, so hopefully we can take advantage, advantage of that.
Ms. Powell?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on what you said is, I think, you know, I don't think we want to have to have kids carrying these back and forth all the time, but I think a lot of times, even when I look at the flooding in February, maybe we didn't know if we were going to be out, but if there is just torrential rain coming or forecast of snow, I think that sort of should trigger teachers to send the devices home in a just-in-case situation. So I do think that that's going to have to be some training that we're going to have to do about them, because it's, it's not something we're used to doing, but I think getting kids and teachers prepared to be able to learn from home in a way that they have not been able to, even if they don't have to do it, it might be that they can come to school because there's not that, you know, we never know with our storms. I mean, half the time we think there's going to be a blizzard and there's nothing, and then when we don't think there's going to be anything, there's something huge. But I think if there's even just the potential, I think we need to start preparing our students to be taking their devices home.
Ms. Christie?
Yeah, I can support moving back to the 24th. My concern is there doesn't seem to be any metrics for what puts us on red, and I hear this concern from both people that are worried about sending their children back into school and those that desperately want their kids back in school, you know? Even the ones that want their kids back in school are concerned that, you know, on the 23rd are we going to go to red after they've already made plans to start on the 24th? And I know that we're working with the Health Department, but there just seems to be, other than saying that we're working closely with the Health Department, I mean, when people ask, well, how will we know? It's like, you know, what do we say? We, we'll tell you? I mean.
I believe, I believe that her Buchanan spoke about that at the health meeting last week. Do you have any information on that?
Oh, I don't have any updates. I, I know she has cautioned us really from a standpoint that if you, if you set a, well, first of all, let me just say there were a couple of counties that set an eight tenths of a percent to a 1% number, you know, and when we researched that a little bit, in Hamilton County, for example, their Health Department had, had no input into that. So I'm not sure where the 1% came from, and then another county may have just used, you know, the Hamilton County model, but, and so I asked Dr. Rieswick, I said in our regular phone call, please talk to Dr. Buchanan, and I'd like to know the significance. If we're going to use a number, what's the significance of eight tenths of a percent and 1% in terms of cases? And she said, there's no significance. So, you know, it didn't seem, it didn't seem like, well, we ought to adopt a number, because if there's an outbreak, say, say jails have an outbreak, or say there's a manufacturing firm that has a, an outbreak, and we base, it may not even impact us, but if we set a number, then we're closed. It didn't really impact us. So, you know, that was kind of the conversation, I think, that Jason and John had with Dr. Buchanan, and I know we, we'll send this to you. We've got, the Health Department does give us some input. They look at several different things, but, but again, Dr. Buchanan has cautioned us, hey, any one thing may not, may not trigger a closure. It may be a combination of things. And it's not to say one thing couldn't trigger it, but it's just, it's, it's, it's really a difficult process, like, for example, they, they look, here are the community health metrics. Three-day shift detected above a 3.0 standard deviation above a rolling mean based on data from the previous 14 days. And that's looking at, at sustained reduction of, or stability in new cases for 14 days. Community-wide sustained and increased diagnostic testing with consistent or decreased test results reporting turnaround time. Again, a red would be a three-day negative shift detected more than 3.0 standard deviations below the rolling mean based on data from the previous 14 days, and result reporting turnaround time exceeding weekly average. So that's another metric they look at. Then they look at sustained or increased public health capability. Healthcare system capabilities remain within current and forecasted surge capacity. Sustained or decreased COVID-19-related death rate for identified positive or probable cases. So those are the, the metrics they're continuing to look at on a daily basis, and, and we'll get an updated report, and the last time that was published, and we'll send this to you, this, we'll get you an update when this was back several days ago. But, but you can see there are two reds, two yellows, and a green, and I think John looked at it today. One of the yellows shifted to green, I believe. So it, it wouldn't necessarily, it could be one of these, but it could be a combination. And then in terms of our metrics, what we look at is student attendance rate, and we went back and we looked at, okay, what is, what is, in the past, what has student attendance rate been when we've closed schools? So, and Scott did this, our math, our resident math teacher did this for us, so when we looked at that, an attendance rate of less than 85% for students was something we, we kind of looked at as a, as one of our metrics. Also, we looked at attendance rate for teacher and school-based staff attendance rate. It's fallen somewhere less than about 88.6% attendance when we've made the decision to, to close. So, and, and right now, you know, again, we don't have students, but we got a 90, 98% to 99% attendance rate, you know, right now. Now, you know, when we start school, that may look different, obviously. Also, we look at support staff attendance, and that's bus drivers, I know Russ monitors that. Also, support staff attendance rate with our cafeteria workers, again, Russ, an operations area monitors that. Support staff attendance rate for custodians, and we, we've got percentages, like for example, bus drivers, 10% absence rate, or support staff at cafeteria, 20% rate there. For custodians, 20%. And we, and we also look at substitute fill rate. If the fill rate is, I don't have my glasses on, I believe that's 65% fill rate with substitutes. So those, and we'll send you this information, but those are some, we, we consider all of that. So again, it may be a combination of those, those metrics when we close, and again, I'm not saying there couldn't be one metric that just, that does close us down. So it's, it's, I wish it was a lot easier to explain than just to say, okay, this number, this is a number, and anytime it goes above it, we're not in school. But it's, you know, just, it, we, we do monitor, we do talk to the Health Department, do talk to Dr. Buchanan and seek her advice and her counsel, and, and we look at our metrics as well. So I, I, I don't know if that helped, Ms. Christie, or not, but, but again, we'll send, we'll send this to you, we'll get it updated and send it to you.
Okay. Did you have any other questions, Christie?
Let me say one thing while I'm talking too. I want to thank the board. You know, we are scheduled to get, I think, all of our devices, and Russ, you jump on me if I'm wrong here, all of our devices are going to be delivered by the 11th, I believe, the scheduled date.
Good morning, gentlemen, and the great day.
So thank, and the reason I'm thanking you is because if you hadn't taken the action that you took when you took it, you know, we might not be in that situation. So just to have all of our devices prior to the start of school was, is really great, and I think all secondary devices will have been deployed by August the 14th, I believe, which is great. And then elementary, we'll look at starting the deployment there on the 17th, so hopefully that week we'll have, all of our elementary students will have their device in their hands and the family so that they can turn them on, use them, and get used to them, and be ready for the start of school. So, so thank you for your very swift action in allowing us to make that purchase. So I think there's some school systems probably that are going to be on back order, and I'm not sure when they might get them, but y'all did great, and I just think I need to point that out to, to everyone, because if you hadn't done what you, what you did, we might not have, might not be in that position. So thank you.
Ms. Christie?
So I have one more about the contract with the Florida Virtual Learning. When you say that this will be the equivalent to 55 or 65 teachers, if we were to hire those 55 to 65 teachers, what would happen when this year is over with those positions?
Oh, and it, it wouldn't work out exactly that way, because the, these are, where we got that number is looking at all the sections, so maybe if I'm a high school student, I might have, and, and John, you may have to jump in and help me here, but I would have, I could have three classes at my base school, and maybe one class would be with virtual, with Florida Virtual. So we just took the number of sections and just said, if we were to hire, that, that would be assuming you could take that number and put that number of students in every class. So I just threw that out there just to say this is what it would look like if, if you, with the equivalent number of teachers. I, I hope I didn't mess that up too bad.
So would we be able to guarantee them, well, if we had people to fill the positions to, you know, teach the classes that we need them to teach, what would happen next year? Would we be able to continue their employment?
No, that, that would be, that was a good point. That's why I say this, this really gives us the flexibility, because this is our first year of, of providing a virtual learning program. You know, and it'll be, it'll be really good, but, but, you know, we had some experience with that in, in the spring too, and, you know, we're going to do the best we can with the virtual model, but if a family is not happy with that, then in December, and they want to come back, you know, say, and I, I don't, I have no idea what the number will be, so we know we're 18,000 plus right now, say we're, gosh, come to December, we're 9,000. Then, you know, with this contract, then that would, we, we just wouldn't purchase those additional sections right there. But if we had teachers employed for the year, then, you know, you've got the teachers for, for a year, so, and I don't want to make that sound like, hey, I'm, boy, I'm in favor of outsourcing, because I'm not. I'm not in favor of that at all. I'd rather have our employees, and, and gosh, if we had the luxury of having more teacher applicants to choose from, then we would have, you know, we would, we would have done our best to staff it, you know, that way, but we just don't have them, and, and you can. And, and you can see by the fact that we're having to ask teachers to teach on their planned period just to make up in the in-person, uh, program what the, you know, what the issue is. But, uh, that's, that's a great point, Ms. Christie, to make, too, that, hey, gosh, if you, if you hired those teachers, what are you going to do with them if you don't need them? You know, you've got them for, for a year. And, and, and Mr. Dupla makes a great point, too, that, hey, this is not a, not a long-term uh, contract. We're just basically trying to, to, uh, work through the, this year with where we are. And, and, uh, you know, like I said, uh, I hope COVID is, uh, in our memory at some point here, uh, down the road, and we can get back to, uh, to normal, uh, in-person. But, but, but again, having one-to-one does allow us to, to, to do some other things, students, some other opportunities to extend the school day, extend the school week, take courses maybe they, they didn't, um, have an option to take while they were in school. But, and I'll say it again because I've said it many times, there's nothing to replace that teacher in the classroom. That's what works best. And that's the model we want to have. But, but again, these are, it's a different time. So, um, asking you to, you know, bear with us here and let us, uh, work through this and try to provide our students, uh, and our families and, and our, uh, with the very best educational opportunities, whether they've provided, whether they've requested in-person or, uh, virtual.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first thing, I want to, uh, make a comment about the calendar. And, uh, I know things have changed, but about, mm, I guess it's been probably 10 days ago, I heard you on the radio being interviewed by one of the local, uh, people that have a radio program. And it was, it was one-on-one, and you got into this scenario of what if, what if you do this, what if you do that? And I thought you did a, a excellent job of explaining to that person and to anybody that might be listening that it was, it was almost impossible to go through and have all the breaks that they desired to have and yet get out before Memorial Day. Uh, and whether you agree or disagree, you did a good job of explaining it the way it was. Now, uh, in reference to what Ms. Hill said, I tend to agree. Uh, if you start, uh, changing this or changing that, uh, we're just going to have to accept the fact that we're not going to make everybody happy. You definitely are not. And things are not going to go, I almost, I almost assure you that they're not going to go exactly like we would desire. I don't know what will happen, but they won't go exactly like that. So if you can't accept that, you know, then it, then it's going to be tough. But, uh, I, I think if things are better, I think a lot of, uh, kids and parents that have chosen not to go to school now because of their fear of the unknown would really like to send their kid to, uh, an in-person situation. And of course, with the younger grades, they tell us that, uh, the science tells us that it's, they're not as likely to, uh, to get it, like, we're 10 or, or under. I think I read that somewhere. Uh, so, I mean, in reference to that, and in reference to, uh, the, uh, contract situation, I apologize, I was late and I didn't get in on all of it. But, uh, it's just not going to be whether we do, uh, the contract, whether we approve them or whether we reject it, go some other route. It's, we can do the best we can do, and that's all we can do. That's all Bob and the staff can do. And there is a limited number of, of dollars out there at some point. But, uh, I would, uh, I guess I would ask this question, uh, to the superintendent. If for some reason that the, uh, million-dollar contract was, uh, rejected or the board chose not to approve it, then what would, what would we do at that point?
Uh, well, without teaching positions, I, uh, this is a number that, that probably can change a little bit, but we would have 1,100 students that we couldn't get scheduled in, uh, in, in virtual, the program that they've enrolled in.
Would they be regular students?
Yes. Well, they, they-
Some of them would be.
They, they're all, yeah, they're all our students and, you know, but these are, but these are, these are across the district, and it, it changes.
Across section?
Yes, yes. And I, I think today, maybe the number was more like 1,400, I believe. Um, that was 1,100 yesterday. So as we're working through schedules, that's the reason I said it's, it's kind of a changing number till we get to the point of getting everybody scheduled. But I think there's about 1,400 students. If we didn't do this, this program, then we, uh, we wouldn't be able to offer, you know, virtual program learning to them like we said we would do. And, um, so this allows us to, to make that commitment, uh, to them. I mean, we do have people, we do have our own teachers teaching in the virtual program, but this is, this is the, the spillover, I guess, if you will. We can't get, we can't get them enrolled because, again, the classes are, are, are full. And we have to, we have to still be cognizant of the teacher-people ratios, even if we do virtual learning. Uh, we can't exceed those ratios at the state.
Well, did we have more teachers retire than, or?
No, we actually, we actually, when you looked at the numbers, we actually had, uh, fewer teachers this year. If you look at leaves, resignations, um, uh, retirements, this year we actually had fewer teachers, uh, in total number than the previous three, two or three years. We looked, looked at that information, too. So, um, again, it's just, it's, it, all the numbers are, you know, if all the kids, if you could get, take 25 kids that would break out in e, even numbers, you know, you could do better, but it's, it's, it doesn't work that way.
Have we got more students overall?
No, no. I think we're about the same.
Have we got teachers that just don't want to come back? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but I think there was, uh, maybe six, 63 took a leave of absence without pay, but, but when you look at the total number, we, it's fewer numbers this year of folks who either took a leave or resigned. The way it, like, the way it, it breaks out, we had to collapse, we'll have to collapse classes. There'll be some, some enrollments at schools will be higher, not exceeding the, the ratios, but will be higher because, again, if you had three teachers teaching, uh, a grade and one of them, one of them goes to virtual, for us, then, again, those, you know, students are going to have to be divided by, that are left over have to be divided by two teachers in the classroom while one is teaching virtual. Uh, I don't know. John, maybe you, maybe you can do a, a better job of explaining than I'm doing right now, but, uh, it just doesn't-
You've done, you've done a very good job, but it's, it's just complicated. Um, so, yeah, I think what Mr. Thomas said is true. So if you have, and some of our schools have, there's three second-grade teachers, and so maybe they have 20 kids each, so 60 kids total, right? So what we might have is a situation where only 10 or 15 kids in that whole grade level wanted virtual. So it's not, it's not necessarily enough for them to give up a teacher to teach virtually at their school. So you still have three teachers that are going to teach live, but instead of 60 kids, you have 45 kids now across three teachers. So those, you can't give up a full teacher to teach those 15 kids, so they have to go somewhere. So this is where, uh, we do have a bit of a shortage in some areas of teachers, and what this does is just magnifies the problem. So, uh, an example in the high schools, uh, we're down about five math teachers right now, just in our on-campus, uh, high schools that we have. There were enough sections pushed up to the virtual program that the schools couldn't handle that we would need nine additional math teachers to teach those. And so what that means is every high school's done the best they can to try to handle those lows, but they still might send 10 kids from Algebra I and 15 kids from Geometry that they couldn't handle that were virtual. They couldn't give a whole teacher up or a whole section up. So all those come to a cumulative at the district level, and it would be nine additional teachers. So it kind of magnifies the, the math teacher shortage, so now instead of just needing five, we need 14.
What's maximum on the virtual? As far as the number of kids?
Uh, well, it, the number of kids would be, if you're talking about per class, it would be the same as the state, the 35 in high school, uh, you know, the 20 and the 25, based on the different grade levels, uh, in the elementary. So it's the same BEP numbers that we're applying, correct?
With the 35.
Correct. So it's the same for virtual.
Well, could you not? You don't have enough people if you, uh, by going virtual, if you, uh, grouped kids from two schools?
Especially at elementary level, we've done, Julie and her team have done a great job of that. So, uh, if they have, if there's, so say there was an elementary school that had a, a teacher that was teaching 15 kids virtually, and that school gave up a teacher to be a virtual teacher, still in their school, still with their kids, uh, say it was second grade again, and there was another school that only had three virtual kids, then those kids are in that teacher's virtual class, so we didn't have to go hire a teacher. Worked that, it's a little cleaner in elementary because you're, the certifications are, are broader for that, and you know from being a high school teacher, you know, the certifications play out where, uh, to Mr. Thomas's point, you may have three, three of the kids, four classes could be handled by the school, and then there's one section that they couldn't. And where we get that a lot in high school is if there, there are a lot of classes where there's just one section offered at a high school, so maybe there's a, an AP Calculus class, and maybe that class only had 14 students in it. And say if six of those choose to go virtual, then you have, you know, there's not multiple sections, so then that principal would say, we're going to keep the on-campus class with eight, and these six have to go up to a district class, and that's where we start accumulating those numbers to the virtual level.
Since you've mentioned that, that would be a, uh, probably one of the, the, uh, one class in math that you would have fewer students.
Correct.
But could you, uh, take that or, or, or something else that was, uh, that you didn't have that many students and combined, uh, say 50 kids under one, one teacher?
You still have to be at the, 35 is the max still for a number of, so what, the State Board of Ed didn't, 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 uh, didn't relax that, um, they left it at the same BEP ratio for virtual?
Well, they never relaxed it, but, I mean, as far, that I know of. But in certain situations, normal situations, if it was something that we really needed, you could get a waiver for it. And since this is such an unusual situation, and since you're doing it virtually, it looks to me like, I mean, you can't do everybody that way, but if that were the only way that you could cover it, I believe you could, you, it would be worth pursuing, and maybe as the year progressed, we could, you know, there are people hired every year after, once you get into the teaching, I mean, once you get into the school year.
It's a good question. We actually did ask that question already. So, uh, what the State Board allowed, the State Board allowed a, um, so it's, it's based on an average, again, as you remember from teaching. So you can, you can have, uh, you can't have over a max of 35 kids in a high school class, but your average can't be 35. So what the, what the State Board did was they allowed, they didn't move the max for the classroom, so the max is still 35, but they did allow the average to go up to 35 instead of 30. So that was the average is 30, but the max in a class is 35. Uh, what they, what they did relax was allowing all the average and the classes to go up to 35, but they didn't waive it past 35. So we wouldn't be able to put 50 in a class.
Do they, you may not know this, probably wouldn't have any reason to, do they have the actual final say, or is there somebody above them, like the commissioner or the governor, that could overrule?
It's a good question. Actually, I do know the answer to that one.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Well, and here's why, because it was, it was, it was unique through the, and Mr. Dupla will jump in if I'm off, but, um, when it, when COVID, when it happened last spring, it usually is that the waivers go straight to the commissioner, and that's kind of final say. Uh, but this, uh, State Board, well, actually, the state legislators passed it to where the, the commissioner doesn't have total call on that. The commissioner then brings their recommendation to the State Board, and the State Board of Ed approves or denies the commissioner's waivers at that point. So, so in this case, uh, she would have the first right to say, I would approve these, but then still has to take State Board approval for them to happen. And, and there was a meeting about two weeks ago where that happened. She brought the waivers there, and the State Board chose not to, not to support some and to support some. So it's, it typically had been the commissioner's call, but now the legislator wrote it into where the State Board, uh, has final say, is my understanding.
Is there any appeals process? That you know?
That I'm not aware of. I would have to look at that. I'm not bothered.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You've answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McMillan. I think Ms. Babbel is next, and then Ms. Hill. Was Ms. Hill next? Okay, Ms. Hill.
Thank you. Um, this is also a question about the, um, uh, Florida Virtual School, and I do support what you're doing, and I do understand that, that, um, especially some of our, um, uh, areas need so many more teachers. Math was one, certainly mentioned, some of our honors programs. I would like, I would like some clarification because I promise you, before we get home tonight, there will be an email from somebody that says, I'm a math teacher and I applied for a position and I didn't get it. And, um, or whatever the position might be. And I would just like clarification that just because someone applies for a position does not necessarily mean that they might have all the qualifications or be what, what KCS might feel like is they fit for us. Um, so be it math or elementary or, or whatever, could, could you, Mr. Thomas or, or Mr. Bolton, speak to the fact that there probably are applications sitting up there that might in fact fit one of these virtual hires, but not necessarily be the right person for the job?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Let Scott address that, if you would, Scott.
Madam Chair, Board members, um, that may, that may be the case. Uh, just because you have a certification doesn't mean that you automatically will be hired. Uh, there may be other factors that, that, that draw into that. I mean, one of the things we, that we encourage our principals to do is to look out and reach out to the references. You can learn a lot by references. Uh, one of the things, you know, we encourage them to do is go beyond that. Look at, uh, previous employers, look at the, uh, what their supervisor, their last supervisor had to say. So we, we do try to do a thorough process of vetting people, and I think that's important because it's, it's critical that we have not only certified instructors in front of our, our students, but also qualified, well-vetted, uh, teachers in front of our students. And so we do try to take, uh, extraordinary measures to make sure that that's taking place.
Okay. Ms. Bab.
Yes, um, Mr. Thomas, I was hoping you or one of your staff could talk to about the issue of families that we knew ahead of time were going to have Wi-Fi issues and how we're working through that and how that's going.
Uh, yes, and, and let me just say, too, we, uh, we've talked about that, and we, uh, think it got on the order a number of hotspots. I'm not sure if that order, Russ, do you know if it went through? But we, uh, we're ordering, we already had some hotspots, but we've ordered hot, others as well, and we are asking when, at deployment, too, if, if families have the internet access. So there's been a little bit of confusion, I think. Sometimes families get the computer and they think because, uh, the, the device, they got the device, they have the internet. So-
That's what I was wondering how we're really, because I think the families that don't have it are probably the ones most in need of help on figuring all this out.
Yeah, you're, you're asking what time it is, but I'm going to have to tell you a little bit about how we're building the watch. Uh, the, uh, we've got, uh, a process in place and, uh, a contact number in place where families who don't have, uh, internet access can call us and we'll help work, work them through that process. Uh, there are, uh, a number of internet service providers in the county. Uh, the one that is working with us most closely is Comcast. Uh, and, uh, the, and, but all of the, uh, internet service providers have a discounted, uh, rate, uh, that they can, uh, put, uh, families, uh, who may be economically challenged into. And that's, uh, that's what we're working, and that's our first preference, is to get folks in. And, uh, we've received about 150, 160 calls, uh, as of, uh, yesterday, uh, folks identifying. Out of that number, there are probably- Uh, folks identifying, out of that number, there are probably half that actually qualify, uh, for those programs. Uh, the others that called were looking for a reduced rate on the connectivity they've already got. And that's not what the program is designed to do. So that's our first choice is to get you into a discounted program. And, uh, the, um, uh, chamber has been working and with the Oxford Education Foundation as well to, uh, develop ways to fund those, uh, low-cost, uh, connectivity options if families can't, uh, still can't afford that. For areas where you may not have, uh, internet service at all, uh, we were looking at hotspots to bridge that gap. And we may, uh, wind up using hotspots to bridge the gap between, uh, your ability to get, uh, low-cost internet into your home. Because even if today we go to Comcast and say, hey, here's, here's a person that we want in and we can fund it and it's, and, uh, it still takes two or three weeks, uh, to get things in the home and get, get set up. So we have, uh, on order, if I remember correctly, about eight hundred, uh, hotspots and we have about two hundred on hand. That may or may not be enough. But again, like everything else right now, those, those are backordered. So we're going to have to work through that. We know that there are more people out there that have connectivity issues than have called us at this point. And, and we've been doing outreach through various, uh, entities, uh, in order to try to call this to folks' attention so we can, uh, start getting ahead on that. Uh, I really, you know, I'm, I'm a little, little, I, I don't, I wouldn't say pessimistic, maybe it's realistic. I think people will call us and tell us they've got a problem, uh, once they, uh, have a computer in their hand and are trying to get into classes. And it's like, oh, this, this doesn't work. Somebody needs to help me. And that's, you know, that's when the wave will hit the rocks and then we'll have to be scrambling to try to, to, uh, get everybody, uh, some connectivity. So I, I don't think all of that is going to be ready to go on day one regardless of when day one is.
But it sounds like we've got some processes. Are we doing anything like when they pick up the computer, having something like with it, like if you do not have Wi-Fi, call this number?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. We're asking the schools to ask that question and, and to get that number. And there are handouts and brochures that, uh, that the I T department has been working with our partners on to get together. And, and, uh, we've got some additional outreach efforts that we're going to take over the next several days as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to lift up a different, another perspective. And so while I'm not a fan of outsourcing either, or especially not a school in Florida, I do see the opportunity of virtual school being a opportunity for scholars that at their home-based school, they might not have a Latin teacher, but they now can take a Latin class. And so as we move forward in this, because I don't think COVID's going anywhere. I do believe we're going to go on red sooner than later. Um, we doubt, we now have an opportunity to give kids options of classes that they might not have at their home-based school while keeping them in their home-based school. So I look forward to K C S developing our own in-house virtual programming. And I would love to see it in a way that scholars can really take advantage of academic success. So just wanted to throw that perspective out there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right. I think we'll move to discussion of the agenda for next, uh, next week's agenda. Do we have any questions on contracts one or two? I'll give you guys a minute to get everybody there. Okay. Any questions on one or two? Okay. Three or four? Here we have a second reading on, uh, board policy D one-ten. Any questions on that? Okay. Grants A or B? C or D? E or F? G or H? Okay. And do we have any questions on contracts A, B, or C? Okay. And moving into regular agenda items, questions on one? That's A. B? C? D? Okay. Any questions on E? Mr. Thomas, did you want to make some comments on E, the resolution?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, just a few thoughts about this resolution. Um, I know it's been a concern of our educators for some time and it's an important topic from a policy perspective. But, uh, I wanted to say first of all, I, uh, that I am a supporter of state mandated assessments for students and evaluation for teachers. And I think we can all agree that if you don't measure your progress, it's impossible to know whether you're meeting your goals. And that applies to the work of education as well. As a district, we have a responsibility to our students, our families, to make sure that students are learning and growing. And it's hard to ensure that is happening without state assessment and evaluations. But we also have a common, some common sense to use here. And it seems clear to me that we simply cannot pursue state mandated assessments and evaluations in the same way that we would during a normal school year. Our teachers have a difficult job at all times and they rise to the occasion again and again. But I think it's important to consider just a few of the added responsibilities that will be on their plate this year because of COVID nineteen. For teachers who are working in our in-person, on-campus model, many of them will be asked to take temperatures before school, distant, disinfect high-touch surfaces, rearrange their classrooms to support physical distancing, teach while wearing a mask, ensuring that students are wearing a mask. Meanwhile, teachers who are working in our virtual learning programs will be asked to create a new innovative learning model, basically from scratch. And all teachers must be prepared to teach in the virtual environment during a red model. Evaluate learning loss from our spring closure and help students catch up and make sure that lessons are prepared in advance in case they need to quarantine. And again, let me be clear, I'm confident that our outstanding educators will overcome these challenges and that the work of teaching and learning will go on. They are dedicated, talented professionals, and they're going to make sure our mission is accomplished. But when it comes to state mandated evaluations, our teachers have told me that they need some relief and I agree. Uh, the question, as a matter of fact, is one of our public forum, what can you take off my plate this year so I can do, uh, the job that, that, the very best job that, you know, that you hired me to do? So a one-year pause will free our teachers to care for their students during this stressful time. And we know our students are, are going to need that care. And to focus on increasing academ, academic achievement while protecting the health and well-being of our school communities. As I referenced earlier, students were able to choose from two academic options this year, in-person and on-campus instruction with additional safety measures or enrollment in our virtual learning program. This was a necessary step because of COVID nineteen, but it also introduces a level of variability into our instructional process. We will be working very hard to ensure that high-quality instruction happens in both options. But as we implement this new system, I think it only makes sense to pause the state mandated student testing. In addition, students will be assessed throughout the year to determine how much learning loss took place during the summer closure and how to address that learning loss. Throughout the school year, teachers will address learning gaps as well as new material. And teachers, as they always do, will provide testing to monitor their students' progress. Like all of us, I'm hopeful that COVID nineteen will soon be just a bad memory. We can quickly return to normal rhythm, both in our schools and our daily lives, including the resumption of state mandated assessments and evaluations. But at least for now, I think this resolution is the right approach, Madam Chair. So I would appreciate, uh, the board's consideration with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We have any comments? Ms. Christie?
I'm just curious about what, um, and I can support this, but I would like to see what we are doing as a district. You know, because for the last two years, I know when we've done your evaluation, we've not had any real academic data to go on. I mean, if we're doing things in-house, it would be good to get updates on those. I mean, I, I don't, you know, I, I don't think it should be punitive. But I would like to see, you know, the impact this has had on students and, and where they are academically.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And, and Dr. Ryswick too, I guess with, and again, we'll, we'll, we'll take this to the table, think about it a little bit more. But I guess with our, our, uh, R E A department, possibly we could look at, uh, you know, at, at that, I think. So knowing, knowing it's a question in advance, be glad to, to, to talk about that and see what we can come up with.
And Ms. Christie, you know, that's one of the things that we do need to discuss as we look at the evaluation tool and really just trying to ask that very question. Are there other data points that we would have regardless of whether or not we have this information? So, um, so that's what, um, I had already had a conversation with Mr. Bolton about looking at some of those. And so we'll, we will discuss that at the retreat um, as we talk about that evaluation tool. Um, I think that's a great question. Ms. Bab?
Yeah, I totally support this, um, resolution. And I don't know if I'm joining in what Ms., um, Christie said, but I do think one of the things that I think would be good for us to know, and I mean, I'm assuming we're going to do it, is we know kids are going to be at a loss starting this school year. And I know it's going to be very hard for teachers to teach what they normally have taught. But I do think it's important for us to know where we're, where we're starting with these kids. I don't know that T N ready and that sort of thing. So I think even just for us as a board to know how we are kind of doing those kind of assessments. Because I, I do, I feel for our teachers. I mean, it's going to be a struggle for a year. They're getting kids that have been without education, for a lot of them for five months. Um, you know, basically they went on spring break thinking they were coming back to school and then we've never come back to school again. So, um, you know, I know that there are challenges. Um, I do think the T N ready model of testing our kids is not what we really need to be stressing about this year. But I do think it's important that we've got to figure out where our kids are, that we're starting with and where we're taking them. And I guess one other question I have is who is, and I probably should know this, but who has control over making this decision? Is it the state legislature, the governor, Department of Education?
I, I think, yeah, the state legislature, I guess ultimately. I don't know if the, I mean, I, I guess it's a federal, it's federal law. So, uh, I don't know if the department, I'm not sure about the process that the department would ask for a waiver or the governor would ask for a waiver or the state legislature.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just curious who we're directing this towards, um.
The, so.
Mr. Dugger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Bab and, uh, Mr. Superintendent. But the, uh, yes, the state legislature always has that, that power. Uh, of course, they could delegate that to the governor, you know, in times like this. Uh, but, but yeah, I mean, you know, when there's been a waiver in the past, it's certainly come, uh, from the state legislature because that, because it is state law that, that these things be done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. McMillan?
Just a follow-up on that. Mr. Dugger couldn't, uh, the commissioner could, would, could possibly have the power if the legislature deemed it so appropriate, could, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes. That's if the legislature deemed it appropriate. And, and what's happened in the past when, when such waivers have been granted, usually the commissioner is recommending such. So, uh, so that's always a good, a good person to have in your corner if you're asking for a waiver.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm, I'm obviously, uh, very supportive of this resolution and, um, I appreciate the work of our teachers. And I know that they're coming to work with concerns about safety in a difficult environment. And, um, and I think that our teachers need to be able to focus solely on remediation, finding out where the kids are, making sure that they are meeting that need, and then helping them advance to the next level. And so if that, if this is one thing that we can advocate for that will take some of that pressure off, I have no doubt that the professional teachers that we have in our system will do an excellent job making sure that, that that happens, that our students are growing regardless of whether there is a, a state mandated test hanging over their head and, and as part of their evaluation. So I think that, um, I think we, we need to place trust in our teachers, that they, um, will do an excellent job, that, that we know that they will. And, um, and, and so I hope we can pass this resolution and advocate for them in that way. So any other, any other questions? Okay. Ms. Bab, we will move to public forum.
Ms. Tanya Coats?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tanya Coats, Knox County, president of the Knox County Education Association. So there are two things, um, before I get to talk about the resolution that I wanted to come and talk about. I would just ask you to go back and look at, I know that was brought up about teachers working more days in regards to students. But we are working at seven, three-four hours and those days that we were bunking were for students. So if we had to use those days, those days do not, they are misaligned with each other. We would never be overworking ourselves. At least we wouldn't allow ourselves to be overworking ourselves. But the students is the days that we're trying to pay back when we have snow days, those implement weather days. So we're always trying to put back their days of instruction, not our work days. They're, they're already built into our, um, so I wanted that to be cleared up. But in regards, you're right. But and I'm, I hear a lot of great things about what I'm getting ready to talk about in regards to this resolution, um, about eliminating high-stakes tests and teacher evaluations. The superintendent's right. You're right. At least you will be next week if you pass this. The focus needs to be more on our students, not standardized tests. We have a big lift coming up on August twenty-fourth, if and when we get there. That our students need to get back on track academically, emotionally, and socially. We don't need to focus on anything else but their needs, not the needs of state bureaucrats or anything else but the needs of our students. We also cannot waste valuable time prepping for a test. T V A S, the Tennessee Value Added System, supposedly uses a three-year model to create a score for teachers. Over the past three years, testing has been non-existent or a debacle, if you can remember. The model is gone. We haven't used it in three years. So let's save thousands of dollars, thousands and millions of dollars that's spent on T V A S and put it back in the classroom and on teachers that we desperately need. Research also shows that trying to measure teacher effectiveness using standardized testing scores is invalid. Now imagine using these useless and screwed scores to assign teacher scores. It's wrong in normal years. It's going to be laughable this year. And in the future, we must continue to focus on our students. Any teacher will tell you the need to be, have, their testing needs to be reliable and valid. State testing neither this year because of COVID and the disruption of instruction and the suspension of the test last year, the results will be screwed and meaningless this year because our kids are stressed out as we are. Accountability doesn't go away. We suspend if we suspend test scores this year. Student, teachers and educators across this district assign grades and we take them seriously. Our grades are meaningful and the most accurate measure of teacher assess, student assessments. Let me say that again. Our grades are meaningful and the most accurate measure of student achievement. It's while leading the college, while leading colleges and universities are using grades rather than A C Ts or S A Ts on admissions like Ivy Leafs. I implore you and I ask you and I beg you on behalf of the educators of Knox County, trust the educators. Trust your superintendent. We will get this job done. Thank you.
That concludes public forum.
Thank you. Okay. We'll start with Ms. Lee for board forum. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say to community members, teachers, um, to challenge yourself to look at different perspectives as well. For every teacher that wants, that doesn't want us to open, there's a teacher that can't wait to get into the building. And for every child or parent that doesn't want to send their kids to school, there's kids that can't wait to get into the building. And so I believe that's what Knox County schools is given, given, given the options of that. Um, so just, just try to think beyond your, your circumstances and service the sixty thousand kids that we have. And as for superintendent and your staff superintendent, I want us to go with the shift. I don't want us to go back to the school system that we've had. Um, I think this is a great opportunity to move into a more fair, a more equitable and just school system. And so I challenge the staff to think beyond. think big, think beyond what we've done, and let's, let's, let's move with the shift.
Ms. Hatterfield?
Hi, I have some data I'd like to share that didn't really fit anywhere else. It will be quick. It's just, it's little.
Okay.
There's a lot of conflicting research about whether children spread COVID, whether, how dramatic it is with them. And some countries, their research has found that children don't spread it as far, that children who are positive aren't spreading it to their families. In other countries, the research is showing that children have massively higher levels of, of, of COVID in their bodies when they're, when they're tested. So, back and forth between all of that research, which is true, we don't have a way to really know yet. It hasn't been peer-reviewed. We can guess, but to really know, it's going to take some time. What we do know is that we have 800, 1,841 active cases in Knox County right now. We know that Knox County, just Knox County, has had a person die every day for the last seven days. We know that Knox County has had 400 school-aged children and the state considers that children between age five and 18. Knox County alone has had 400 school-aged children test positive, seven new cases today. We need to be looking not just at what could be, we need to also be looking at what we know to be true. We know the numbers that we have of cases here in Knox County. And that needs to be a very serious consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to compliment Ms. Coats for speaking up about that. Of course, my whole time here, I've talked about evaluations and let's see, what did I call it? I think it's pseudoscience, gobbledygook. That's T-VAS. And I hope when, one of the good things about COVID might be that we pause on all this stuff and really take a hard look at it. So, I hope they do. I really do. Because it's a disaster and everybody knows it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norman, Ms. Christie, Mr. McMillan, Ms. Bab, Ms. Hill, Ms. Bab. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.